Call the order, welcome to the April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five Local Board of Appeal and Equalization Meeting. I hereby call the meeting to order. Members of the public may attend this meeting in person or may watch and listen remotely by viewing the meeting on Channel Eight, WCTV, and the city's website at wyzetta.org/WCTV. The city manager will provide more details shortly, but please note that appeals may be provided in person, here by filling out an information card, or by logging into the team's call and raising your hand during the hearing and indicating that you would like to appeal. When your name is called in the meeting, you will be seen and heard in our council chambers and the cable channel. You will be asked to unmute and then to begin your comment for three minutes. Please make sure your camera is on and all appeals must include your full name and address. Next on our agenda is our roll call. Let the record note that all members of the board are present this evening. And now we'll move on to the agenda, which is to consider the appeals, and we'll start with some background with the city manager and from the county.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, council members. Long time no see.
So I'm just going to provide a just a brief background on the process and just taxes in general and why we're doing what we're doing. And then we're going to have a brief summary of Hennepin County data as it pertains to Wayzata from our Hennepin County assessors. And then go over a little bit more about the process tonight, and then we'll get into the nitty gritty, which is reviewing the three different types of appeals for your consideration tonight. And then obviously have some time to take any public commentary and appeals as well. So first and foremost, I just want to do a high level kind of why we're here. Ultimately, as we all know, government receives revenue to operate its services with three major buckets. That's sales tax, income tax, and property tax. Our, meaning municipalities, main source of income is through property taxes. So how do we figure out how much revenue is generated from property taxes? There's two big processes throughout the year that really answer that question. One is at the end of the year when the taxation rate is approved, which is based on the city, county, school district's budget, that we approve a levy. And the other process is the valuation process. Annually updating each property based on market value ultimately determines the share of what property owners need to pay. Each of these processes involves public meetings. Obviously, there's the the truth and taxation meeting at the end of the year when the budget's approved. And at the when the valuations are considered and approved, that's this process in the spring. Each of these processes involve public notices. There's a public hearing for when the budget's approved later in the year. And for this process, valuations are mailed to each property owner by a specific date in every property owner in the community. And they are made aware of this specific hearing to appeal, contact the county, and, you know, petition their property taxes and their valuation if they disagree with it. So I'll stop there. Any questions regarding process at all? For this part of the valuation process, this part of, you know, revenue generating, the city contracts with Hennepin County to provide all residential and commercial appraising services. And tonight we have commercial appraiser Melody Devine and residential appraisers Shane Larson and Mike Smirdon. They are the ones that are that really work with Wayzata property owners and will be the main speakers tonight. And real quick, just in terms of what we saw this past year in Wayzata, you can see compared to previous years, the the valuation increases are down significantly. Residential still pretty robust compared to the other parts of the county at six point five. And then you can see this this was in the packet. So if anybody is listening or watching at home, can't see it, it kind of shows the the trends of how increases are generally more towards the western half of the county and the in the more rural areas. Maybe I'll pause there to see if Mr. Larson, Smirdon, or Ms. Devine had any comments about just overall what you saw this year.
Yeah, overall, the the growth in total, the net increase was about five percent for the city. Single-family properties increased about seven and a half percent. Residential condos, three point four percent. Townhomes, seven point four percent. Duplex, triplexes, seven point three percent. And twin homes, five point seven percent. So pretty even amongst the different property types.
And I can talk about the commercial markets. Our commercial team does the apartments, the commercial, and then industrial. As far as industrial, you guys only have one non-exempt industrial property, and that was flat for the two thousand and twenty-five assessment over the two thousand and twenty-four value. Apartments, the gross growth on apartments, there's thirty-three parcels that are included in the apartment analysis. And the gross 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 growth was two point five percent. Net growth of one point nine percent, which doesn't include improvement value, which was one million, five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. For the commercial properties, we have a hundred and thirty-one parcels that we value. The gross growth on those was three point five percent. And the net growth was one percent, which that's without the improvement value of fourteen million, eight hundred and ninety thousand. So to break down some of the specifics, the most parcels on the commercial side are office. We have fifty-three office parcels, and our gross growth on that was six percent. And a net growth, which is without the improvement value, was one point eight percent. The other largest contributing category would be retail. We have thirty-two parcels that are retail. We had a negative two percent or twenty, negative two, yeah, negative point two percent growth on that. So it was a little bit of a decline, rather stable. And that's it. Any questions?
Mayor and council, what's on your screen is summarizes basically what Ms. Devine and Mr. Larson had kind of given.
Questions from the board? No?
Great, moving right along. In terms of the process tonight and how we got here, ultimately, as I referred to below before, valuation notices were sent out. They must be sent out at least ten days prior to this hearing. For us this year, they were sent out March fourteenth, so almost a month ago, so allowing a lot of time for residents to contact the county. That might be one of the reasons why we've had less kind of appeals make its way through the hearing. And then ultimately, valuation or classification changes during the ten-day period prior to the local board of local board requires hearing action. So you'll see as we go through the spreadsheet that a lot of the appeals have already been discussed and agreed upon. But because they were made within the last ten days, they still need to be, actually need to be taken out on tonight. So when it comes down to tonight, you'll go through the the list that we'll we'll get to in a minute or so. Ultimately, we'll ask folks in the audience and also folks on teams, both residential and commercial, if they would like to appeal their property valuation. And ultimately, if there's both a high amount of appeals and ones that maybe are just missing a little bit of information that if we had a couple more weeks, we could hold a reconvene session and make a determination on the value at that point. But because of the circumstance of we don't have a lot of appeals that are still kind of disagreed upon, and we only have a few people here tonight, I would strongly suggest that I think we can handle all the business tonight. We do not need to have a reconvene session. But we can cross that bridge when we get to it in, you know, a little bit of time here. So real quick, you'll notice the spreadsheet itself. In summary, there's a lot of information, but there's three types of statuses of appeal. One is the appeals that were received after the ten-day period. The assessors and the property owners have discussed the valuation, and there's an agreement upon the value. The next is there that same process happened with the county and the property owner. However, there were no agreement on the value. Lastly, there's also some appeals on that list that either they just were received and we hadn't had a chance to go out and and do our due diligence, or, you know, we couldn't get in contact with them or some other communication challenge. So those are the three types of appeals, and those are the ones that, you know, ultimately, we're going to be going through them all. But the the last two are the ones that there will be discussion on more specifically tonight. And before we get into that, well, no, I can just.
Jeff, before you get to the list, I just have a statement I'd like to read. And this is for our residents and property owners either here or watching this later or on teams. But we recognize that property valuation and taxes are a significant matter for our residents and commercial property owners. Wayzata property values are substantial. The total estimated market value of Wayzata property for two thousand and twenty-five is approximately three point six billion. High property tax values can be beneficial, particularly when you're selling properly. But however, in our state's property tax system, which relies on a pro rata share, significant increases in property value combined with the spending decisions of various local government entities, including the city of Wayzata, can lead to considerable impacts on individual property tax bills. We understand that participating in a formal hearing process, especially one being recorded, may be unfamiliar or cause apprehension. Our board is committed to conducting this hearing respectfully and fairly, adhering to the established rules and procedures, while also ensuring a welcoming environment for discussion. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Well said.
And actually, my next thing is just, Mayor, if you would, please open up the meeting, then we can go through the the list.
Yes, I'm happy to open the hearing for review of our list. And I think I'm turning it over to the county or back to you?
I can just preface before we move over to the county. I would just ask that if you are in attendance today and wish to comment on your property, have not contacted the assessor to appeal, please complete a blue card, the three of you. Hopefully, you have. I think we've received them, so maybe this direction is not needed since we only have three folks in the room. So we're going to go through the list, and at the end of it, we'll see if there's any others, but.
Well, just to oversimplify it, we're going to go on agreed upon, no agreement, and not enough information in that order.
Exactly. And I think before, I think we just can move through the ones that have agreed upon unless there's anything for Mr. Larson to add. We can just go through those. And what's the specific action that we'd like the council to make on those?
The well, the council can decrease the value, increase the value, or affirm the original assessed value. I've provided recommendations based on what what we saw. The council can affirm those unless there's an owner in attendance, property owner that would like to to be heard tonight.
So, Mr. Mayor, I would go through, you can just use this spreadsheet on the presentation. The ones where property owners have agreed, go through each of those individually. We should read the PID and the address. And then ultimately ask the board if there's any discussion.
Just top to bottom until we get to yellow.
Exactly.
So first, I guess I'd like to open the hearing for three oh eight Walker Avenue South, PID number zero six one one seven two two three one zero zero one nine.
Yes, that is a commercial property. The property owner contacted us on April seventh, which so we weren't able to reach an agreement on the within the ten-day window. That's why it's come to the board for a vote. We had never been allowed into that property since they got their new tenant back in two hundred, twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three. And this time they did let us in, and we did do a inspection, and then we did a review. And we did offer them a reduction of seven point nine five percent from four million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars down to four million, three hundred and forty thousand dollars. So I'm looking for the board to vote to affirm that reduction.
Any questions of the county about their information? Does anyone want to adjust this in any way? Hearing none, then I would accept a motion to accept the county's revised assessed value.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, I guess we would vote yea or nay. So we don't have to do roll call though, or anything?
No.
So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Next one is one four one five Wayzata Boulevard East, PID number zero five one one seven two 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 four zero 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 six. Turn it over to the county.
Okay, that one includes three PIDs. It's the Wayzata Crossings property. So that would include fourteen.
All of them, sorry.
That's okay. Fifteen fifteen Wayzata Boulevard and fourteen eleven Wayzata Boulevard. We do handle them individually by PID.
Oh, you do.
Purpose, so that's okay.
Okay.
So the property owner did reach out with concerns about the fourteen fifteen Wayzata Boulevard property. That's the one that's currently occupied by a bank. And it is a, we had to do a review of the entire property, given that they're connected by a skyway. And after doing our analysis, we agreed to move back, roll back the value on that individual PID to last year's value, the two thousand and twenty-four value. So the other two, we did not recommend a change in value, and he concurred with that. So and the owner also did concur with our reduction down to nine hundred and thirty-five thousand on the fourteen fifteen Wayzata Boulevard property. So that one is going from one million, one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars down to nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
And you want to take these one by one in terms of an affirmation of it or not?
I think you could probably read all three PIDs and then do one vote.
Okay, we'll do that. So next up would be fifteen fifty Wayzata Boulevard East, PID number zero five one one seven two 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 four zero 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 five. Over to the county. Oh, yeah.
Mayor, I think you can just read all three.
I'll read them all.
We have, we have no, he has concurred to no change in value on those two, so I think you can vote.
So I'll just read them in the record. Fourteen eleven Wayzata Boulevard East, last PID number in this block is block of addresses, zero five one one seven two 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 four zero zero five eight. And so as the, do you offer comments on any of the rest of them, or we can move to affirm or adjust?
I would handle all three of those as one vote. So you could make a motion to reduce the value on the zero zero six PID and sustain the value on the on the other two PIDs.
Okay, first, are there any questions of the county? Hearing none, I would accept a motion as the county staff has suggested.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes. The last one in the commercial block is two hundred Lake Street East, PID number zero six one one seven two two three two zero zero two nine. Over to the county.
Yes, I was contacted by that property owner last week, a representative for the property owner, Mandy Cullen. Is that your man? Okay, I wasn't sure. She said she was going to attend. I talked with her today. As of last week, they hadn't appealed. Today, they did call and formally wanted to appeal. So this is a complicated property. It's the redevelopment site, the former TCF headquarters. I would make a recommendation to the board that you sustain my current value at nine million, eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, and we move this appeal to the county board level. And the reason I'm recommending that is because it's complicated, and I don't think I'm going to get enough time, even if there was a reconvene within two weeks, to complete my analysis.
Okay, and just for clarification, has a recent inspection of the building occurred?
No, no, we just got the official notice that they wanted to appeal today. So we're going to have to do an inspection and information gathering as well.
Okay, so I would, any questions of the county based on that information? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Plakish.
I mean, I have no problem with moving it forward, but I'm just out of curiosity, do you know if there was any value for this property given to the building?
We have a thousand dollars on the building, which was typical when there's a redevelopment. Where that's basically.
So it's blighted, blighted.
Yes, knowing that it was going to be redeveloped, we put limited value on the improvements.
Okay, so if we're comfortable moving forward with the county recommendation, I would accept a motion to affirm the valuation that we have before us.
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest allowing opportunity for Ms.
Oh, to speak, sorry. I didn't know. Apologize. Would you, would you, would you like to speak in any way? If you do, you could approach the dais. If you don't, and decline, that's fine. Okay, so you're declining to speak, that's fine. So going back here, thank you for that. We would, would someone like to make an emotion to sustain the recommendation and move it forward for further discussion? So going back here, thank you for that. We would, would someone like to make an emotion to sustain the recommendation and move it forward for further discussion with the applicant with the county, at the county hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And do you understand what was communicated in the process and that your rights are held and you're moving forward to the next step to, to challenge, challenge it with the county's process? Okay, thank you. You bet. Now we're moving on to residential. And the first one on the docket is 607 Gardner Street East, PID number 0611722120032. Over to the county.
Uh, yeah, the property was inspected by an appraiser in our office. Based on kind of the age and condition of the property, it really shouldn't have increased that much year over year. Appraiser made an adjustment, basically giving it more depreciation to reflect the effective age of the house, of the home. It resulted in a reduction of 9.24%, and the owner concurred.
Okay, do we have any questions of the county on 607 Gardner? So does anyone want to challenge this, or I would accept a motion to approve the county's recommendation of the change in value?
I'd make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That moves along. Next one is 494 Bovey Road, PID number 0111723430020. Over to the county.
Again, an appraiser from our office did a physical inspection of the property, made some adjustments based on what he saw on the interior. The basement didn't have very many lookout windows, made some adjusted, adjustments to the basement quality, as well as the site value is rather small for the area. So that was the basis for the reduction, resulting in negative 6.72, and the homeowner concurred with that.
Any questions of the county? Anyone wanting to challenge this recommendation? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve the county's recommendation on 494 Bovey Road.
So moved.
Second.
Moved, seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, first say aye.
Aye.
That passes. Next on the docket is 176 Babcock Lane West, PID number 0111723110015. Over to the county.
Yeah, made an inspection of the property based on the, on the homeowner's request. Reviewed all the characteristics, looked at some sales data, basically corrected some of the characteristics just based on quality and effective age of the home. It wasn't as updated as the characteristics reflected, resulting in a slight reduction of 2.11%. The homeowner concurred with that.
Any questions of the county? Anyone like to challenge this? Okay, I would accept a motion to approve the county's recommendation on 176 Babcock Lane West.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Sorenson.
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Next on the docket is 242 Glenbrook Road North, PID number 06117222140032. Over to the county.
Again, appraiser from our office did an inspection of the property, kind of like the one we talked to about before, based on the area, the condition and age of the home, really needed more depreciation because of the, the land values being, increasing so much over the last few years. Just needed to have a lower effective age, and to make some adjustments to that. It resulted in a 13.79% reduction, and the homeowner concurred with that as well.
Okay, any questions of the county on this one? Anyone like to challenge this one? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve the county's recommendation at 242 Glenbrook Road.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second by McDonald. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That moves ahead. Next on the docket is 1107 LaSalle Street, PID number 0511722320051. Over to the county.
Uh, yeah, I made an inspection of the property, met the homeowner there. It was a rental property of his. Both of us agreed that it would be a potential teardown based on the market there, Central LaSalle. I performed a land analysis, valuation, reported the results to the homeowner, and he concurred that it was the correct value.
Any questions of the county on this one? Anyone want to challenge this one? All right, I would accept a motion to approve the county's recommendation at 1107 LaSalle Street.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That moves ahead. Next on the docket is 117 Edgewood Court, PID number 0611722230347. Over to the county.
I made an inspection of the property with the homeowner. It was in very similar condition to another unit that sold over there, so we made some adjustments to create more similar condition characteristics to that one, and the homeowner concurred.
Okay, any questions of the county? Anyone like to challenge this? Okay, I would accept the motion to approve the county's recommendation on 117 Edgewood Court.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes. Excuse me.
Bless you.
Okay, I moved my paper. Now I'm out of order here. So it's Rice Street is the next one, right?
Correct.
Okay. So next on the docket is 527 Rice Street East, PID number 0611722240085. Over to the county.
For 527 Rice Street, I made an inspection of the property. There was some data corrections there as well. It had a detached garage with some finished area over the top, but it didn't have any forced air. Didn't really consider it gross living area, so made some adjustments there. That was the basis for the reduction, was 6.82%, and the homeowner concurred.
Any questions of the county? Anyone want to challenge this one? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve the county's recommendation at 527 Rice Street East.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That moves ahead. Next one on the docket is 128 PB Lane, PID number 0111723410033. Over to the county.
Uh, yeah, this one was a vacant lot, and it had sold recently. It was a raw land sale. It really shouldn't have appreciated the same as, you know, a lot that was ready to build. So made some slight adjustments there after looking at some other sales, and resulted in a reduction of 8.47%, and the owner concurred.
Okay. Anyone have any questions of the county? Anyone want to challenge this one? Hearing none, I would accept the motion to approve the county's recommendation at 128 PB Lane.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That moves ahead. Next one, 265 Benton Avenue North, PID number 0611722140072. Over to the county.
Uh, 265 Benton, I had a discussion with the, with the owner, decided to come out for an inspection. When I got, we had discussed some sales on the street, and then when I got there, he said he was fine with the value. He, he wasn't aware of some of the sales on the street. And so he didn't want me to come through. I did some measurements of the exterior, but he decided that his value of 600,000, 700 was, was fine.
Okay. Any questions of the county on this one? And we can't challenge this because you didn't inspect it, right?
Correct.
Okay, no challenge. I would accept a motion to approve the county's recommendation for 265 Benton Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That moves on. Next one is 450 Hillside Drive West, PID number 01117233200022. Over to the county.
Uh, this one was, basically I had more of a discussion with the owner. She had some questions, more specifically about some other properties in her area. I asked if I could come through the property just to confirm that we had all the correct She didn't want an inspection of the interior, not even really sure if she was appealing her value, but I said if I can't come through the property, we, we can't do anything about the value, so.
Okay. Any questions of the county? We can't challenge this one due to no inspection. I would accept a motion to affirm the county's recommendation on, for 450 Hillside Drive West. Motion.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That one moves ahead. The next one, I believe the applicant is here, or the owner, 545 Indian Mound East, PID number 0611722240146. So if you've given your information to the, if you have extra copies to the county, that's fine. Otherwise, if you would approach the podium, and we'll be asking you questions after the county makes their position, and then you're offering your additional facts to challenge, and then we'll have a discussion about it, and then we will come to a conclusion at the board about what we're going to do about, about your challenge. So welcome here, and just approach the podium. Yeah, you can, right here, you go right to the, I'm sorry, I should have been more specific. Right where it says City of Wayzata? Nope. See where it says City of Wayzata with the microphone? Sorry. Take your time. It's, it's gonna, it's just fine. You're going to be on mic, but you're just going to ask to, just, just wait for one moment. The county's going to offer first some, some commentary. Then you'll be given a chance to offer your facts to challenge, and then we'll bring it back to the board for discussion. So just one moment, and over to the county who will start with their assessment.
Yeah, good evening. I had talked to your son, Josh, and he was, he had some analysis that he had given me. He, I believe he was using lot size, square footage per assessed value for, for coming up with his analysis. It didn't, it didn't seem to, to be truly how someone would analyze the value of a townhome based on the lot size. I sent him some square footage, GLA numbers, and he was just contending, he, the property was purchased in 2002 for $2,292,000, and he was contending that the property value should be a million seven, something around there. Just, it wasn't making sense to me why it would be $500,000 less than the purchase price and about a million dollars less than the most recent sale. There was a resale of a unit this last year. They're newer townhomes, newer builds. I've been through your home right, right after you built it. Originally, when they were purchased, they were selling in the range of years for $2,200,000. The most recent sale sold for $2,700,060. So that's indicating an increase in the market since they were the original purchases in 2022.
So, Mr. Chu, you're, you're, have the podium to offer your facts or your reasoning why the valuation should be less. Hold on one second, is this microphone on? One second. I apologize, we're just going to make sure the microphone goes on.
I keep talking, I'm sure Fred downstairs is fixing it.
No, no, that's why, that's why I made the statement. You're fine. We're, we're all actually Wayzata residents here. We'll give you a fair chance to speak, so we're just trying to get our technology to work. Oh, it wasn't on? Okay, welcome again, Mr. Chu. Take your time.
And my son appreciated speaking to you, Shane. He said you were really on top of it, and, and he deals a little bit in real estate, that's why I had him take care of this. But just a couple of things. One thing, I noticed that the valuation from 2024 to 2025 was 250,000 less. So I'm not complaining about that, but I'm just wondering what happened that it devaluated in one year?
Are you talking about the 2024 assessment?
Yeah, that was 2,227,900, and the 2025 was 1,000, 1,988,300.
Um, I believe there was a sale that indicated the values were a little bit high. Let me see here.
I've understood your question, you noticed it did, and then it came right back to where it was before, and you're trying to understand fluctuations.
Yeah, it's kind of irrelevant to what I'm on a discuss.
It's been good for you to know, right, about how the county viewed it, and then you can go on to.
Whatever happened, I want it to happen again.
Fair enough.
There was, oh, there was a sale on Rice Street. There was some sales activity that showed we were a little bit high. So the property values came down for your street on Walker, too. Basically, we did a closer look and made some adjustments there. Maybe the property value shouldn't have come down in 2024 after looking closer at, at the data there, but it was, it was driven by a townhome sale off of some, off of Rice Street around the corner.
Okay.
And then the sale that occurred this year in 2024 for 2,760, and that indicated that we were low on the townhouses on, on Walker and, and Indian Mound on your street, and that's why they came back up.
What's the relative percentage of change of that? Like, you have it for everything else, I'm just curious what that relative percentage of change is?
From '24 to '25? So these, these townhomes from '24 to '25 increased 20, about 23%.
All right. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. Just to give a little background, there's seven units, three buildings, and I'm in a unit that has three, a building that has three units. And because of that, I only have two walls with windows. The other two buildings that only have two units in each have three walls, so I don't have as much window space. I think I'm a little closer to the sidewalk than the other units, so I need to have my blinds pulled on the first floor. I'm right at the beginning of the driveway, a shared driveway that everyone drives through, and it's a very short spot where I have that I can back out. So it's kind of a problem, but there's a lot of traffic that goes by, and I think that should enter in a little bit into the valuation of the property. The, I did some calculations of the average square foot, and I'm not going to go over the numbers, you know, I can if you want, but, and the average price per square foot. And I'm, I have the smallest unit, and it's 223 square feet smaller than the other units. And by calculating out the averages, it appears to me I should have a valuation of 175,000 less than what I currently have. And I can show you the numbers, but I don't want to bore you with all that. So I'm proposing that the property is valued at 175,000 less than current.
Would you like to respond, or did you have other points you'd like to offer first? Go ahead and respond to his first point.
Uh, sure.
String of points.
Sure. I was wondering if you were looking at the square footage of the lot size, or if you're looking at the square footage of the actual structure, living space?
Living space.
Okay. Okay. Um, I do understand the, yours is a little bit different on, around the corner. Um, the, one of the comps that sold recently as well only had two sides, one was an interior unit as well. And in addition, I, I, yours is a little bit different style than the other ones, it took that into consideration as well. Um, but again, based on the valuation of 175,000 less would bring it, uh, very near to your sale price from 2022, but based on a resale of a property that sold for 30% more than when it was originally purchased in 2022. Um, and I, this is my opinion that the assessed value is, is correct.
Do you have any other, um, comments that you'd like to make? And again, you know, our job is to look at where their position, where your position is and then we'll have a discussion about it and rule it one way or the other.
Well, I guess, I guess that's it, I, I could show you the numbers, but, uh...
You have certainly more time if you have any other facts that you'd like to put out there.
That's all I have for my...
Okay, so thank you for being here, now we'll bring it back to, to the board to discuss. Um, would anyone like to start with a discussion about, about this property, about their perspective on it?
I'll start with some questions of the assessors. Um, do you happen to have at your fingertips the assessed values of the other homes along this stretch?
I do.
Would you mind going through them from nearest to him to furthest away maybe?
Uh, again, his, uh, Mr. Chu's value is 2,450,200. Uh, his, uh, neighbor, his wallmate is 2,510,100. Continuing down, 2,537. 2,544. 2,549. 2,534. And 2,749 for the end unit. So this is the lowest valued.
And this might be a little bit of a stretch of a question, but do you happen to have those values per square foot for each of those homes? You don't need to go through them all, but do you have, even happen to have those numbers?
I don't have them readily available, I'd have to crunch them out.
Okay. Do you feel that they would be roughly the same? It looks like all the, all these homes are 2.5 to 2.7 million and they look to my eye at least to be a little bit bigger than Mr. Chu's property, but he's also slightly lower, but I'm trying to get a sense for this per square foot comparison between the two, or between all of them actually.
Uh, again, I could crunch those out, his is, let's see, his wallmates, so Mr. Chu's, uh, gross living area is 3,020, his wallmates is 3,075. Uh, then we have 3,300, 3,100, 3,300, 3,100, and 3,300.
Okay, well doing quick mental math, it looks like they're roughly in the same area per square foot, yeah, okay.
Pretty roughly, yes, yep.
Are there comments or questions about this?
Which pro- property sold recently that you're using?
The property, uh, at 207 Walker Avenue, that one sold for 2,760 in May of '24. And when it was originally purchased, four months before Mr. Chu's, it was purchased for 2,96,000. So using a paired sales analysis, it's a 30% increase since the purchase and, of that property.
Over how many years?
Uh, that was from, uh, March of '22 to May of '25.
Other questions from the board or anyone want to offer or start the discussion of affirm where the county's at or make an adjustment? I'll start. I think Mr. Chu made some valued arguments about the uniqueness of the site and the, the location, the road and the other impacts that may negatively impact the value. I do respect what Councilmember Plekis said about trying to equalize the square foot, but I think the location, um, you know, lights and windows, things like that could, um, potentially justify this. I would start, uh, by reducing this by 2% or $50,000 is where I'd start, but obviously others need to weigh in and see if anyone would agree with me or challenge it another way and then we can see if we drive consensus towards a, a motion.
I have a, I was just calculating the square footage, there are the 3,300 square feet one, the third one here is 768 a square foot, the other 3,300 square foot one was 772. In my view, the ones along Walker seem to be, I don't know, better visibility, nicer. Um, they share with one other unit instead of two. Um, I do feel like this one is sort of on the back alley side of the unit, so, I mean, I could even see, I haven't calculated the number, but going down to something less than even that.
Sure, go ahead and, uh, make a proposal to see if it would be supported.
The properties on Walker also look into a wooded hill, you know, that goes right over here and...
Well Jeff, I, just to help you out, I'm at 2% or $50,000 and then you could take it another direction if you wish.
If we went all the way down to the 772 or the 776, it would be significantly less, like less than even what, what the purchase price was, but...
You get to make a proposal, so go ahead.
Yeah, um, I kinda wanted to do it based on some facts here, but...
Yeah, no, take your time.
I would say at least 100,000 off.
100,000 would take it to, I think about 6%? No, 4%. Um, 100,000 off of 2450, 200 to 2, 350, 200. Um, anyone else have comments or, or...
4%, that'd be 4%.
4%, yep.
I would support council or board member at Park Hills, um...
4%?
4%. I think the, the alleyway, the three walls and, um, being kind of the outlier of the neighborhood, that makes sense to me.
Thank you, Councilmember McDonald. Anyone else wanna weigh in one way or the other?
I mean, just, again, trying to make sense of the, on a, on a square foot basis, if you took even the higher square footage, cost per square foot numbers that we're chatting about here, his square footage, it calculates about 100,000 lower, so I think some of that range makes sense.
4%? Any other comments? I, I would support that.
So I'll say that, uh, Mr. Park Hill's analysis is far more precise than just stabbing at a number of 50,000, so that makes a lot more sense to me. I am familiar with that block and passer often and, uh, and I do agree that it is, the, where it's located actually is lesser appealing than these other homes along the street, so I, I do think that it should have a comparatively less value than these other homes, uh, no matter how you look at it, so I also would support 100,000 if that's what the formula comes out to be.
I've heard consensus of supporting 100,000 less or 4%. Any further discussion? I would accept a motion to challenge the county's position and drop the value from 245,200 to 2, 350,200 and I would accept a motion for that 4% reduction.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in, uh, further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you for being here, um, that is the ruling of, of the board and, um, you're welcome to stay for this riveting conversation or you can be on your way, uh, to wherever you are going next and thank you for being here. Yep, okay. Next is 353 Ferndale Road, PID number 0111-723-410034, uh, to the county.
Uh, yeah, I did an inspection of this property, um, the property owner appealed, uh, I think two years ago, so there wasn't really much there as far as data correction. Um, I did observe, uh, kind of less than modern updating as well as kind of less than modern layout of the property. Um, based on a sale of another property and comparing it to that, I thought that other one was a little bit more updated and nicer even though it was older in age. Um, and thought it was a little bit too high, so we, we did a, a reduction that resulted in 2.6%.
Questions of the county on this one? Anyone like to cha- oh, go ahead.
Did you actually connect with the homeowner after the drop?
Yeah, we, we talked on the phone and had a discussion about it. He thought it should be a little lower, um, but at the end of the day, um, yeah, we, we looked at some other, there was some significant lot sales there, compared it to some of those and, uh, recent sale. Um, he, he wanted it to be lower, but I guess I couldn't...
Don't we all?
Yeah, yeah, I guess, I guess we couldn't, uh, agree on that.
Well, he's not here to challenge, so, not sure what else there is to say, he did drop it some and...
Yeah.
Better than zero.
Okay, any further questions at the county or any interest in challenging this one? Okay, I would accept a motion to support the county's position on 353 Ferndale Road South.
So moved.
Do I have a second? We have a second from Councilmember Park Hill, any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, motion to approve by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, that moves forward. Next is 438 Waycliff North, PID number 0511-722210034, over to the county.
Uh, yeah, I did an inspection of the property, um, per the homeowner's request, uh, there was a, a purchase, um, for 1.5 million, their assessed value was less than that, the owner had the idea that he had overpaid for the property. Uh, then following his purchase, there was another purchase of a similar property that sold for, uh, 1,462. The subject property is actually, uh, had superior to that one, it had a three car garage versus a two car garage, uh, it also had a screen porch, uh, the updating though was similar. His assessed value is below the sale price of the comparable and below his own sale price.
Questions of the county on this one? Anyone like to challenge this one? Hearing none, then I would accept a motion to affirm the county's position at 438 Waycliff North.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
That moves forward. Next was 824 Park Street East, PID number 0611-7222130087, over to the county.
824 Park Street East?
What did I say wrong?
Yeah, you said two, three twos instead of two.
Oh, so I'll...
Okay.
Sorry, well, you try reading this sheet with these glasses. Go ahead.
I did inspection of the property, didn't see, um, any, any incorrect data on it, then I did a comparison of some other sales. Um, the homeowner thought it could be a little high based on just kind of the increases, um, so we had a discussion about some other sales. Um, I left him a voicemail saying that, that there was no change, uh, and I haven't heard back from him.
Okay, questions of the county on this one? Anyone like to challenge this one? Seeing none, I would accept a motion to approve the county's position on 824 Park Street East.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that one moves forward. The next one is 217 Byrendale Avenue North, wish I had a magnifying glass, to do 0611-722140092, over to the county.
Again, did an inspection of the property, the owner's concern was, uh, obviously the value was, was higher based, was too high based on his location in, um, he's on a private road with an association. Um, took all that into consideration, there was a sale, so he, he had purchased the property in 2020 for 987,000. Um, he, he thought it was worth around a million, which have only been a 13% increase since 2020. Uh, there was a sale on the street and I believe it was, it was still a little bit older sale now, but it was in 2022 for a million 150. And then, uh, looking at, at some comparable structures to his, um, more to the west in, um, you know, areas on city streets and, um, not in association, there's some very similar properties to his that were selling more in the range of a million seven to a million eight. Uh, so taking into consideration, I, you know, I agreed with him that his location wasn't as good, but I, I'm not sure that he was aware that similar properties to his were selling for as high as a million seven to a million eight. Uh, his assessed value is a million 261. And after analysis, my, my analysis came in a little bit higher than the assessed value. Uh, called the owner and left him a voicemail, but I haven't heard back.
Any questions at the county on this one? Anybody like to challenge the county's position on this one? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to affirm the county's position at 217 Byrendale Avenue North.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
I didn't have further discussion, any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Next one is 549 Harrington Road, PID number 0211-723-40002, to the county.
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, it was, the first number is one.
Oh, sorry, one. Boy, I need new glasses. Anyway, uh, over to the county.
Uh, this was a call that, that came in within the 10-day window, um, called them back and left a voicemail, it may or may not have been an appeal call, they may have been calling for general information, um, just no contact from them. But added them to the roster just to keep their appeal options open.
Okay, so I guess there wouldn't really be, or do you have a question on this one?
What's the square footage of this house?
6,550. Is it in a packet? This is not, this is not correct.
Says total finish in the packet, 12,406 square feet.
Okay, thank you.
Can you remind us of the breakdown between the building and the land?
The land is valued at about 8, 8.5 million, the building is valued at about 6.4 million.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this one? Anyone making a challenge or can we even make a challenge since there was no...
There was no inspection or, or no contact.
Moving it along or preserving their right to move it along if they choose?
If they choose.
Okay, I would accept a motion to affirm that.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
That moves forward. Almost done here, 118 Babcock Lane West, 0111-723-110009, over to the county.
Again, this is another one that called within the 10-day window, uh, called and left them a voicemail, I haven't heard back. Again, may or may not be an appeal call, they may have been, been seeking general information, um, but no contact there, just adding them to the roster if they wanted to keep their appeal options open.
Okay, so we're just affirming that they are preserving their rights to move on to the next step if they choose, I would accept a motion to affirm that.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Last one on this list unless anyone's online is 131 Huntington Avenue South, PID number 0611-722410032, over to the county.
Uh, this is one where we have been playing phone tag, just having a hard time getting ahold of each other. Um, last time I called, I left a message including my email address to see if she could reach out that way. to see if she could reach out that way, but wanted to add her to the list to keep her appeal options open as well.
Okay. This is just, again, affirming and preserving this rights to roll forward.
Yep.
A motion to affirm that.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. So that concludes. Now I'll ask the city manager or the clerk if there's anyone online.
Mr. Mayor, there's not.
We don't see anybody online. We don't see anybody here. So again, for those who are not satisfied or preserved, oh, go ahead.
I do have two people that called today.
Okay, great.
So again, just like to add them, add them to the record and keep their options open. The first one, bear with me one second. I'll get the PID number.
Yep, no problem. Wear your glasses.
The property ID number is 06117-22120015. It's 530 Broadway Avenue North.
Okay. So this is just affirming their rights to move forward and will accept a motion on that, in that regard?
Yes.
So moved. One, who would need a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Moves forward. And you have one more, I believe?
I do have one more. The property ID number is 01117-23430017. The property address is 453 Highcroft Road. They called and left a voice message as I was arriving in the parking lot.
That wasn't you, Alex, was it?
Just to, just to leave the appeal options open for them.
Okay. So again, we're affirming this PID number and property address, affirming their rights to move forward to the, to the county hearing. I would accept a motion to affirm that.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So hearing nothing new on teams, nobody's walked through the door. So I'll ask the city manager, do we have a need to reconvene in April 29th?
Mr. Mayor, we do not.
Okay. So then the county board, did you have something? Oh, no. The County Board of Appeal and Equalization, the next meeting, I believe is on June 16th, 2025, and all requests or appointments for that should be received by, I believe, the 21st of May. Is that right?
Correct, the 21st of May.
And in order to do that, I'm just going to read this into the record to make it easy for our residents if they want to do that. They can call the county at 612-348-7050, 7050, or they may email them at countyvalueappeal, all one word, at hennepin.us. Okay. Any further comments from the board before I close the hearing? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to close the hearing and that we are not going to reconvene later in April. So I'll accept that motion.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? Hearing none, the hearing's closed. Thank you for your time this evening. Thank you to the staff. Appreciate it. Thank you.